Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move forward and get the North Plains City Council regular session meeting started at seven o'clock. Please stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laurie, please. Thank you, Councilor Page.
Here.
Councilor Kendall.
Here.
Councilor Martinez. Councilor Payton. Here. Councilor Sheldon. Councilor Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Lenahan. Here, thank you. All right. Give me. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And if there's any corrections or issues to attend to. Excuse me, there none. I will not adjourn from motion to move.
Moving to the consent agenda for the meeting today. February six point three.
Awesome.
All right, we have a first and a second. Always in the ring, say hi.
Hi.
Any fellows saying hey? There none, what's your favorite? Thank you. Um, just a moment. All right, item number six on our agenda is the public comment. And this is the time that we wish folks from our public to bring concerns and questions to the city council that are not on the agenda. We do have two folks in the center here that do want to speak about an item that is in the city manager's report. So although it's part of our packet and part of the record, it's not an agenda item per se. But so I have instructed the two residents to come to the podium and speak during public comment and give us their thoughts and questions that they might have for their testimony this evening. They have up to five minutes, they're welcome to take the full five, and if they don't, that's fine. And so first up, I think I'm having Jeremy Anderson. So Jeremy, when you come up to the podium, feel free to speak your name for the record. There are marks on the, there is, okay, it's not somewhere.
Yeah, if you just hold down that button.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilors and guests. My name is Jeremy Anderson, I'm a homeowner in the Brandon Hill neighborhood. My wife and I have been excitedly planning our move to North Plains for about a year now to be close to family. However, that transition has not been smooth. I'd like to call your attention to the city manager's report for today's meeting specifically where it's mentioned in the entry under January twenty seventh, that Steve has been working with the Lenar team to resolve a fencing issue. His solution, in this case, is to cut all of our fences to three feet tall. I'm one of the homeowners impacted by this action. He cites the city's clear vision requirement and the existence of a tunnel effect from the alley lined by fences. I've explored the city, including the nearby Sunset Ridge development, they too have homes on alleys. The same with the part of ours with the same tunnel effect. How's ours different? It isn't. I certainly would have never bought this home, it came with a three-foot fence. I can't imagine how much it will affect future sales of these homes. I've never in my life seen a three-foot fence on a single-family home like ours. It's absolutely ridiculous. This will essentially turn our homes into apartments. I also find it interesting that neighboring cities in Washington County have no such clear vision standard in their codes relating to fences. You might also note that in two thousand and seven, our city code was changed from excluding alleyways to including alleyways. I am a cybersecurity engineer for Amazon. I make an enforced policy for tens of thousands of software builders at my company. When a system is out of compliance, either because it predated policy or because it's on a novel design that policy doesn't adequately address, do you suppose we immediately demand that they get shut down because policy? No. We first examine the risk. We look at the likelihood of a risk being realized, the damage potential, the affected parties, any compensation control in place. Then we look at the scope of remediation to determine if the cost outweighs the risk. If the risk is low, the cost is high, exceptions are made, we document it, we track those doubts and errors in policies and then we make corrections over time. So I wonder, is our city growing too fast? Do we have the right municipal code in place to support higher density developments like ours? More importantly, is this type of enforcement really the way our city wants to treat its new neighbors? This action seems to need a high cost to solve a low-risk situation. I would implore this council to help us find a solution here that does not involve cutting our fences to three feet tall. And saying to myself, my neighbors, those with me tonight in support of this, we desire the continued growth of our community. And to that end, we ask you please stop this absurd enforcement action. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. Just curious, any questions? Okay. Next up, we have Andreas. Senator.
Hi there. My name is Andreas Krager, and I'm just here to share part of our experience. Together with my wife and our daughter, we moved here in October last year when we purchased our new home in Redwood. You know, our small home backyard was actually one of the key features for why we chose to purchase the home that we did and choose to decide to move to North Plains. We love the community when we came here, the Redwood, the town, our neighbors. But most importantly, we wanted to have a safe place for our daughter to play outside, our three-year-old daughter. That we're concerned, but we want for her playing outside. So we were, we were very happy to find a place out in the backyard we should be outside. You know, currently after like, through this whole experience, we are in this position where we feel a bit betrayed. And deceived by the city from our communication with the county and the state government. Because the city allowed their home to be sold to the current events. Also, the plans for the home, the official plans to master apply to higher levels. So we feel deceived that we made a big mistake in this first home, first home buyers by purchasing the home that we did. We are concerned for our safety, we are concerned for the valuation of the homes first time home buyers. Because ultimately, we would have not purchased the home that we did. We could have had a different statement. So that's been kind of hard to assume for us. Almost feels like the city is trying to push us or play against us, and that was not the feeling we had on the first. And we love it here. So I think I'm here to share my, our experience and to ask the city council to work. See what we can do to hopefully get them to understand that it's fair and fair and right.
Thank you very much for your input. I couldn't turn around and talk to the jury.
Oh, yeah.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
So it's sort of like, you know, on a long night with the Lenar group. That's created the window, something within, and that's been sort of the vision that has been with the creation for early twenty-five years. And we, however, the principle, the violence of that, because of something in that, we brought a cycle and standards to the city. And so we were actually following the, we were actually even on prior specific standards. We are, we've gone very far to some of the consensus of words that our planners and our city council staff and our other committees, right? And we understand that now this, you can tell about the times, and of course, I would do it, I would be in the community, you know, like, hey, this is not. But obviously, at this time, I can't, I can't change anything, and I can't promise anything. But what I can do and what we can do is, um, look into it and talk to our staff. We do have to trust our planner, I mean, he is our partner, he's the one who interprets our codes and really makes sure that even with the development, it's following the rules, right? So we appreciate that you brought this to us, and we will do what we plan within our company to be able to have a conversation with staff and network our staff and circle back with you, right? As a group. But again, I know that our staff is following our Lenar's playbook. And, you know, sorry if we have to go through this, but we can go to see what we can do. But again, I cannot promise anything. All I can promise is that we will definitely follow up and investigate and, and see what, where we go from there. So hopefully that, maybe that helps. And then I'm going to put part of the student standing in case if there's any, I'll say, man or a person who's going to be in front of you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Jeremy, Andreas, and everyone else for being here. I'll just echo that. Thanks for citing my before. I definitely didn't, I didn't want to characterize it by solutions hacking down someone's fence. Like, that's not, I wouldn't use those words. It's not been an easy issue for Steve, I know that, and others. Been trying to figure this situation out, I think it's a topic we're going to talk about in the planning commission meeting this month as well. What, what he has to balance, what we have to balance is what's in the code and a clear vision standard for having the six-foot fence spread out where traffic still goes through, we just have to look at that with the, kind of the worst-case scenario, okay, what if a kid was coming out behind that on a bicycle? Could someone see them at six feet? So we just have to weigh those things. Trust me, there is no way in the world we're wanting to make, you know, your lives miserable or make you not like this community or the homes that you're moving into. That's the last thing in the world we want to do. We have to look at these through a clear and objective standard, with a visionary that's okay. Trying to, I mean, this code is there to try to protect someone like your three-year-old daughter. All right, the lower the fence, the easier you can see a child coming out, a child, a car backing out or anything like that. In, in an alley, someone can still drive through there, even if it's ten miles per hour. It's not a lot of time to react. So the lower the fence is there for that reason. I totally get what you guys are saying. And just today, we're still going back on, back and forth with Lenar on this to see if we can avoid doing this. Just the issue we have is, it's ten homes, it's fixed now. Would we treat that with all the other four hundred and ninety homes in the development in the future too? So that's what we're trying to determine. And then that would involve changing our code. So anyway, these are things we're, we're still talking about, and I know the planning commission is going to talk about it too, and so I appreciate you guys.
But I haven't been tested, so I think that's what we are concerned with.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I get that, yeah, yeah. That's, that's policy, it's always the give and take and trying to see what, how we can weigh on the middle.
If you're going to speak at the conference this time, I would ask that you go up to the podium and use the microphone and then fill out a form. That process, is that okay? Are you sure? You can, at length, okay? Would you like to do that?
I'm going.
Okay.
You can do that later, sir. Go ahead and testify, you can do that. Yes, yeah.
Because, um, let's speak, your name.
Yeah, hi, my name is Paritosh, and I'm also a homeowner with my wife. Adding to the concern that was already mentioned here, one of the things that we are concerned about is we have a fan. And you'd also like to bet in the real yard. And I've seen why that moves there, especially finally, that many, that more of that particular, yeah. See, I think I've seen three or four. That's the other thing that's important, and that is the priority, right? Is not for the fact. Of course, now we have to just test the law. And the last thing I wanted to say is that I have seen the diversity regarding this issue. And we said that what happened was the guy approved without, like they said, without the license number. And so it seems honestly like a suicide, whether it happens on the north side or on the city's side. But we feel like we are caught in a loop here, and we don't want to be a kind of city on, going to the city in participation. Just that, if possible, let us have this, let the table discuss.
Great, thank you very much. I think we have spoken. I think this is also a topic that, as Sandy mentioned. But I also have to recognize people online, right? They're all trying to be really loud. So we also have to recognize too that this could potentially go back to the planning mission. So that's me and your best interest to say, I mean, you know, continue to read our newsletter and to look at the agendas, but also look at the planning mission agenda too, you know, because they are the ones that we rely on as far as our codes and creating our codes and, you know, amending them and all that sort of thing. So just so that you're aware of how that process works. Okay? Thank you, just funny, and sharing the thoughts.
Welcome to North Plains, too.
All right, we'll go next to our presentation. So this evening, we have the Washington County Sheriff's Office giving us the state of the county. And welcome to my work on this planet.
Evening, Mayor Lenahan and councilors.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilors. I'm sure Eric joined tonight quietly, and Sheriff John, if I may allow, if we could, I'm going to sit in my slot, please. It's our, it's our privilege to provide a sheriff's office update. And tonight, we're really going to focus on countywide services by operating the county's jail. Like some of the specialized enforcement teams that we partner with our municipal officers to keep our county safe. It's really not working together with, with partners like the North Plains Community Bureau Council across the county. That we're able to say, according to the FBI's national incident-based reporting, so crime statistics, Washington County, as an entire county, has the second lowest combined, I'm sorry, the lowest combined crime rate by most populous county in the park. Which we're really, really proud of. And we also are honored to be a partner to serve the community of the park, which is a huge and massive, is incredibly invested in this community. He's continued to grow and serve here as your chief, and we're thrilled to have him to achieve. Slide please. Our mission is literally from the statute. And it's not just about considering these, but it's how we do the job is really most important. So we attach our organization values to them, which start online, serving community. Our strategic goals are also here for you, and they support fostering fashionism, building trust. And of course, fiscal responsibility, the key for everyone in our community. Slide please. There are literally hundreds of statutes that assign specific duties to the sheriff. This list is just some of them, and there are some statutory, there are texts in the line. That's just some very basic public safety responsibilities that we share with our police department, partners, police, some of the state local agency in Oregon, the text been, which is examples of statutory requirements of sheriff's office that we need to exercise. Only a sheriff's office does, does those, performs those functions. And let's see here, it's going to be the fourth one, that we execute civil processing order, which is for example, could move the slide. That's just an example of what we mean when we say executional process, where our civil ethics reserve a page. Now, just tell you where, one example about how we partner with police departments across the county to, to keep our community safe. So the sheriff's office serves to restrain wars, to get the parts. City police departments don't, they don't perform that function, though they have some unique functions that are signed into by the council. So while we serve, we're spreading protected words, it will positively respond in that order. Any police officer, any police officer, or getting, is going to bring them to prison jail. Managing the county's only jail is, as you know, our guilty by our justice system, from high schoolers to the elementary, to the, to the, to the, victims, families, some people in custody. You, you, you will find yourself in jail if you were sentenced to a term of incarceration of less than a year. Upon being arrested where a court wanted to register the release is too high. Or if you found to be in violation of supervision. You're just kind of going off track, and probation officers just do that contract. So if you lose the release, or in very rare cases, enter at this point, or at any point. We have a staffing, I'm just going to call it crisis, as we know right now, because we are unable to run our jail at full capacity. Because we have about eighteen empty vacancies. And we're working real hard to eliminate that gap. But that has prevented us from continuing to keep all of our housing in the circle. We have one happening that's offline, so that takes our full capacity from five hundred and seventy to five hundred and eight. And then the breakdown is, is on a slide. And the, what we're, of course, I'm going to move to the next slide, is we're dedicated to to managing a concrete setting in the midst of a new normal post, not entirely post-COVID, but we might as well be post-COVID. So we have newer arrivals coming to jail, they all go to the same, they all serve the same, as I said, the same, you know, and we mask up for the first few days, and they're there. Just very sure, mind, there's dancers, probably, probably voting, some other, you can see. We're not going to have any medical observation yet, but a cycle number large, we're massed in jail, which jail W C did a great job to stay masked up for over two years, all the time we were in the general. We returned to accept all arrests at the point of twenty twenty-two. So we had some bringing criteria, the present program, went back to both the all, all progress, the morning last. So the police officers have to resolve that policy, because we also keep on this issue, and we need to fix it. That continues to worry for us. The, during six of those, it must be just one example of how it's changed since twenty nineteen. We have a number of individuals in custody for nine, during eleven, just five telling friends have one double at a time. The lines leading to us, the courts slowed down during COVID, and we're still catching up. You've also heard about the U N S attorney, staffing crisis, frankly, the prosecutors are also trying to keep up. And so there's a lot of pressure on the system. And that pressure also translates to a population in our jail, which is more challenging to manage than it was three movies. And I expect to do a great job at that, meet that challenge. But it's just a, it's just a reality part of the world, it's changed, and it's quite smarter than the normal in jail. We remain committed to providing services, reduce recidivism. And so those are programs that just cognitive thinking, how they, how people in custody solve problems to avoid any other custody. And we provide GED testing, English is a separate language, computer skills, job training. We have mentors we partner with to help transition people out of custody into the community in a way that best promotes their, their independence and not, not in that jail. That's, that's our, that's our goal. I will ask John to talk a little bit about some of his, some of his findings.
Thank you, Sheriff. I'm going to talk about some of our county-wide initiatives. We're, next slide please. We're pretty fortunate in Washington County, that we have great partnerships with our municipalities and the county. And in our law enforcement arena, it's just really highlighted through some of these teams. These teams are where we pool our resources, the city agencies and the county sheriff's office, to respond to more high-risk, more complex scenes throughout Washington County. We're able to obtain more grants because of some of these county-wide coordinated responses. And it really makes us more efficient, providing public safety throughout the town. One of the teams that I was kind of mentioning, the practical instruction team, for example, they get a lot of grants for some of the software that they utilize to do pretty reconstruction of not only crashed, things built from major crime scenes. And by coordinating those responses, at the end, we're able to, that I sort of can get, once across the, next slide please. A couple of the major teams we're going to talk about, first one is our back from negotiations team on a crisis. This is your conditional SWAT team and hostage negotiating. Most of our fee members have a new level of SWAT team, based on what they've seen on the. That's not necessarily what our professionals are out there doing. Most of our officials that we're going to be presenting tonight are from twenty twenty-one, so it's a completely, that functions happening, looking together. The tactical associations team responded to over a hundred and twenty-eight calls, which survived the county. Another thing that you just generally don't see on the news, generally not heard about in the community, three of those calls were actually in the city of North Plains proper. Part of the reason we don't hear about that is because of the professionals. Due to their training, we really knew them as an escalation in safety. When you bring in a lot of trained resources, the crisis negotiations, we're able to de-escalate folks in crisis and be able to resolve incidents without the finding support. For example, with these statistics, they had taken over a hundred and twenty-four individuals throughout those callouts, and there was only one result that needed support. And so those are really low numbers, and we're very sparse. So it's really kind of highlights the success of these monitors. Next slide please. The next thing we're going to talk about, the front line prevention team, our factory. This team fires with US market service. And their focus is to focus on checking on residents who's affected in Washington County, as well as looking for one of the other services. The US markets have a very similar mission on a national level, but it's a really good part. We have individuals in Washington County, other parts of the United States, US markets are able to reach out to the market, tell them they're helping us. In addition to the, the teams, there are also a relationship that's set up. The black team tries to range all the thousand residents that are in Washington County and make sure that they're compliant with any part of the regulations. Throughout COVID, that was pretty difficult, and we didn't get those, uh, community members, but they weren't able to get to some of the highest groups that they, that they knew. Now, we're back and we do normal, post-COVID, we got to reach out to customers. The next thing we're going to talk about is our mutual response. This is the team that has been serving Washington County for thirty years. It started as a state team with one deputy and one member of the public. This is a partnership with the sheriff's office, Washington County Behavioral Health and Law and Order supervisor, our licensed managers. Our deputy in, we have to go with the licensed one, and we're able to get those resources to community members in crisis that need reality, out of fear. The house's team has been so successful throughout Washington County, it's explained. We have now almost ten, or eight teams serving all of our Washington County. He was to now provide his assistance, go through a fight. He would now provide his assistance, go through by his assistant to our south county, they just seem to probably follow material, put together the privacy. Crime is also funding team, um, haven't been able to stop that team yet, just because he's been in a commission charge, it's like. But I were able to get more funding for these teams, it's been highly effective in dealing with a lot of folks that are really in crisis. Um, out of the twenty four recalls to service this team responding to the many diverse community assistance, uh, marketplace. Um, the use of forces, extreme levels of funding, uh, or cities, depending on the time period, which are the worst. And then these are folks that ruin devices, they're not responding to low-level folks for mental health. Uh, or such as music issues, those are the real prices that, uh. We just didn't respond. That's all it is. Just gonna talk about a couple of the partnerships here with the sheriff's office and, uh, the Northland District Department. Again, by our definition, providing with, uh, our C, uh, contract deputy's here, uh, we've seen a lot of successes. One of these instances was again, we're coming to, uh, where a suspect broke into public works, driving a vehicle. Crashing through the gate, it was certainly, you know, we're bringing in the ways to the sheriff's office to help back the suspect. And they were almost dead for one. Another one of these calls was a suspect broke into a local business, definitely able to respond, uh, at an effort in, uh, the suspect. The partnership with Northland's place in the sheriff's office, uh, the shift side remains strong, and we're really happy to have that partnership to be able to have our. Next slide please.
Would that?
I didn't know that was in there.
I know about child. Thank you very much for giving your, um, it's always nice to hear what is happening, um, in your room and also in the community. Um, I, I'm, I'm optimistic, I feel a sense of optimism to see that we have more mental health professionals. Um, on the ground and with other, um, officers, um, you know, in the communities and following to the need. Um, last month, the mayors, uh, actually did a wonderful tour, um, for the jail, which is really, um, very insightful. So, uh, if, if that's an opportunity for some towns to us to, I would definitely recommend that you take the time and try to settle something like that, it's very informative. Um, one thing, um, I thought about after that particular tour was the, um, the medical unit that you have. And then looking at your numbers here and just kind of curious, I know you said you have five hundred and eight beds. You could do more than that, but you're at five hundred eight. How many beds are in the medical unit, um, is it full? And, um, what type of things, um, what do you do to move those folks out of? That particular bed if you have, you know, people coming in, like, where do they go? Because there's such a need in our community and the state, and it's something that we lack seriously. Um, we seriously lack, so I'm just kind of curious, what does that look like for the sheriff's department and what's that process of type two?
We have thirty four beds in the medical observation unit, and they are full, as you say, almost full. Uh, the adults in custody who are in those beds generally. Uh, they, they have some, uh, elevated medical issue, which, um, the nurses' stations is right around the corner, the nurses' offices is right around the corner. They are frequently near that unit. And then also houses people with, um, acute mental illness that just need a higher level of care. Uh, and a, and a really higher level of attention. We, um, certainly want to minimize the number of people who are in custody, right, with, with mental illness. Uh, but as a jail, uh, when we, when someone is, so we're actually custody, we have an obligation to, to vote them. Um, what, uh, I can tell you that this whole, I can share that, uh, over the course of the past six months after, um. Um, a hospital that recently passed that basically changed Oregon's, uh. Release system from a cash bail system to a financial release system. The jail hired about six court release officers and helped us in the charge of population. And they work with the adults in custody and family or community members who. Who can, uh, save that for them, uh, or agree to that, but then if we release them, and they need a certain, uh, public safety assessment. Those same court release officers can help us, uh, along with Washington County Health. Find other lodging for some folks with mental illness. But as you may have read in the paper, uh, the Oregon State Hospital, which assesses individuals in custody who are unable to resist, as they already know. There's a, there's a, uh, time limit on how long they can stay, and some of them are being returned to the counties. Before the state, on a previous state deadline. So that's, that's just simply predicting some new challenges, we're getting people back in custody with mental illness. Before they would have otherwise completed their respiration to state hospital. So it is, it is another layer of challenge on our, on our system. Um, but we, I wish we had more of a cooperation in the best, but we are, we have pretty boring. Right. And thank you for joining us on to, uh, that.
Thanks.
Uh, two questions. One, if you're willing to put that on us. Uh, first off, has homeless been increasing or has it scaled down, maybe to an increased level? And secondly, I didn't balance the, uh, two sides of it, one will need to passion. The other one's, the cost of, the area of law, of laws, any movement down. Counsel, that's a great question. Well, the, they're just playing a point in time talent for the office of community members very much. I would say that I think the numbers are actually more than we were initially asking. Uh, we have several ways to work with us, and it helps us to choose, one for the sheriff's office, and we have a whole program, the house, uh, around engagement. But we have a definitely, it's very similar to like our mental health response team, they work with the housing department to join some of these accounts. Make sure we're working with the unhoused community to get them into shelters and transitional housing. They also work with the house community around those accounts to make sure that they feel safe with their consent. So it's really, uh, partnership that we have with some of the county departments. We're currently working on a time concern honor policy that I know is, the city managers are also gonna be having conversations. Are almost trying to be as supportive, or need to cross, what do you think? To make sure that we're serving both the house and the house community effectively. Yeah, so it's got a. It's about nothing in the, in the box, and we're trying to, um. Sorry, saying again, trend is not going up or down, it's, it's just only the, yeah, I was trying to figure out how you guys balance, uh. Compassion really is, but also now when there is a loss, the time, yeah, the background change. Yeah. Since they tend to warn us, our people, our guests. Yes, good question, uh, so our first goal is not necessarily to be making force on, like, you can't, it's really working closely in the intensive housing. We're pretty fortunate, we're left alone, we have seen an increase in available housing, and so we are generally able to just clean up that and, and, and allow us. And any member that wants, we could get into housing, we're like, that's. There are few communities that chose not to, then we have to work with them to make sure that their values, county authorities, and other cities. And so when we come up with a policy, that will be essential, and it's very clear where people can, you know. And with, uh, some of the case law market, you want to see, it really has to do with, um, when we out-hail their housing. So we're pretty fortunate right now to stand in Washington County, when we do come across any powers to remember, there is our option available.
Other questions? Have to get through. But when someone called one one one. To respond to that. You put their call.
We recently measured that, uh, for the, you know, sheriff's patrol this year by the three places. Uh, and the urban, unburdened area, like, is right about the average, is right about. Gosh, you know, and I just, I hate to age that speed. I can't even procure. You know, when we have that data, I can see the graph in my head, we'll get that, that number to, to, to any user.
My words, I'm asking, but he was referring from the lawyers. You know, it was probably, uh.
Worth it.
And so, you know, we put eye open, we, we just went there, and it's overwhelming, even the. Family system, that, 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 you know. The witness. So. Think of a way better shade. You know, I, you know, here crimes here and there, we fought, our hit marks, they don't know what was this. So, I think I appreciate. What we have, or. The other question is. A lot of which wants to try to probably, working with the DA towers, that's just been working in Washington County.
We, uh, we enjoy really solid partnerships with our district attorney's office. And the same is true with our community practice department, our union department. Um, yeah, we're. So, you know, I'm a like sheriff, I, I support our, like, DA, uh. I can support that. More than any of our, using a protest.
Thank you.
I had a little, uh, credit cap and you, uh, so, well, one. God, gosh.
Which I, which are, which is better with, uh.
Counselors and officers.
Uh, the only comment I have is, uh, certainly, that at least on the half of, that our constituents that don't get to see this. You know, we appreciate you coming up and caring about you, because it is a partnership. That, uh, is pretty important, and I think resource-wise, we can really get a better position. Probably even on our own, at least with a level of professionalism. The fact that there's an accreditation process, that to me adds an element to, you know, the delivery of the services and the quality. Um, in, in addition, really just, uh, making sure that, you know, you're out in front of us. Understanding what our needs, what we're asking, sort of, my. So I think. For me, that's, that's an important step in the process, and I certainly appreciate you being there, um. Because I can certainly hear any decisions, or has questions about where we might be going or where we're at, that we can answer.
I appreciate that. That's really normal.
Got a question, um, thinking of something that Council showing, so, how many, uh, jurisdictions in the state of, uh, Oregon are actually accredited?
Last, last I checked, which was about six months ago, there are four. One was in cities that were accredited with the commission, and one was in accreditation, it's a national accreditation standard. It's very hard, we're very private, thank you for asking here. Uh, it is a lot of work, um, nobody grabs time, time, doesn't, it's the work you listen to, but it helps us ensure that our standards and policies are, are on top of that.
Just very lucky to, living, walking on with. This, turning when we have, um, really, really, thank. And our, our own, good job.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, John, um, the point in time count, is that a few times a year, or just once a year done in the, you know, intern, is it? Okay. And I, I don't think I get those annually, is there a way to get those distributed? Great, yeah, I'd like to see that, thanks.
We certainly appreciate you being here and getting the update, and again, I could echo the sentiment from Council showing as far as. The partnership, uh, has been extremely important over the years, and we certainly hope it continues well beyond, so thanks again, very much. All right, that brings us to our next agenda. Uh, the title of the features, uh, inspiration, resolution, find test of city. It's considering approving a resolution to set a local option levy to the Northland voters for the main point one three ballot. And we will come to it.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, we considered putting together a slideshow, a few slides for this, then we determined ultimately, we've been doing this for a year and a half. I think we kind of know the issues, uh, we've showed a lot of the analysis. Um, we've had the discussions, and I kind of went over these, a little bit of kind of where we've been in this staff report. And where we've ultimately landed with a dollar sixty five per thousand. Uh, we have the, um, the ballot, uh, caption, the question, the language that voters would see, uh, for the ballot in May. And then there's an explanatory statement that voters would see in voter's pamphlet that accompanies this resolution as exhibit A. I hope everyone had a chance to take a look at that. Bear in mind, with every single piece of these, there is a word count, so sometimes if you think that read a little bit weird, that's probably why we are trying to squeeze every bit of. Uh, useful information as we could into ten words, twenty words, five hundred words, things like that. But we hope, uh, hopefully we, um, hit the mark, we tried to boil that down, what the importance would be, um, for voters to consider. Um, and supporting this. Um, if this resolution is approved, we have a, uh, press release or news release ready to go out, um, tomorrow. So we can, uh, just start letting folks know, uh, what's ahead, and then we'll have an F A Q that's ready here in a couple of days. Corin's been working on that, and then we'll do a standardized PowerPoint for staff to use. Because once this is submitted to the county, there's, we have to be very educational, like we've talked about. Um, council members and other members of the community, uh, can be a little bit more persuasive, or, you know, emotional, however you want to phrase it. But we have to stick to the facts, obviously. Um, but February twenty fourth is the deadline for when this, uh, a resolution, uh, to place language in the ballot needs to be submitted to the county. I'm happy to take any questions if you have them, um, otherwise, I think it's, um, kind of straightforward where we've landed after, after a year or so.
The.
Counselor Smith.
Oh, I thought we had to go. Oh, no, I have to understand that you did an utmost providing there. And there's been clearly, for my, I have a lot. Unfortunately, the past month, so. That's what I've been wanting to do. But, but, but I bring the, I. I think the duty passes when you get the task. When we know that it's true, you know.
Yes, it, it would, yeah, it would, uh, result in two officers, and that's something we wanted to stress and frame. It's not two F Ds, it would be two more officers, similar to the two officers that we have in the day, we would get two more for the night. So not only is it more, you know, bodies, guns, it's actually two more members of the team, that's what we want to distress, yeah. Actually, there's two right here, so I think the timing is perfect, so. I don't, yeah. I, their graveyard shift days are probably behind in my bed, but. Yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure we can afford them. Call it will be great.
Very lucky, yeah, my version two two one six, just send there with both options. Maybe more fun voters, the name twenty twenty three, uh.
And we have a motion on the table by Council Smith, second by Council Martinez, any discussion? I do a quick question, um, just process question, um. I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, process question, um, so, you know, next step bathroom, um, if this, it's probably results next step. Um, is that something, I know that you can't, that, that it's up to us, and it's up to us, possibly, in form, like, maybe, you know, constituents and things like that, to move forward. So I'm just, uh, looking to you, I guess, maybe for some guidance and a checklist next to us, so that we can move forward. Is that something that you will be able to assist me in obtaining?
I can, uh, refer you to someone that can assist you. Yep, yep, um, and even the press release we have going out, uh, since it hasn't been submitted just yet, you know, we'll be, we'll be able to explain a couple more things in there. But yeah, it's, once it becomes official, and sitting with, actually, once it goes to the, uh, the certain reporter, who is our local documenter. She, she's the one that submits it to the county, and then it becomes official. Do, do you think of a voice vote?
Uh, I would.
Okay.
All right, um, Council Johnson.
Okay, uh, two questions for both of you. Uh, first one is. Uh first one is before we approve the resolution, uh section five. Uh has a question mark in there and I don't think that question mark should be in there. Maybe you can address that, uh that's under the question section five, it says, beginning twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four question mark. Okay. Okay, I don't bother that, all right, so the only other thing I had was on the wording, I think it's spot on, but the question I have is if we shouldn't have. Put the average for residential property in North Plains either in the parentheses or. You know, I know it's kind of semantics. Some people might need that. For a home for an assessed value of two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and eighty two. Common average for residential property in North Plains, it works, I'm just not sure.
Well, I think we're required to do that. This, I know John and Martha are online here, but I believe we're required to show not only the rate, but then what the impact would be to an average home, the assessed value. I think so. I I believe that's a state requirement.
Okay, those are all my own questions or certainly not objections. That I can live with either way, so.
Any other questions?
And I'll just stress for for your uh. For for your assurances, uh the city attorney both looked at this and then um our lobby consultants too, so they've done a lot of these and I'm, I'm ninety nine percent sure that is an ORS requirement to show that. Assess value.
Is it also an ORS requirement to include the.
Correct.
Still in discussion, do you have any questions or comments? All right, we have a motion on the table by Counselor Smith again, it was seconded by Counselor Martinez. No further discussion, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
They both say nay. There is none, question carried, thank you. How many have on?
Yeah, that's.
All right, can I ask about? We are going to need to do that, yeah, and Andy, uh my question to Andy was next step, like what do we do next? And so he was going to get me in touch with somebody who can help us. Thank that, and I'm going to say that I'm going to volunteer you, Counselor Smith, to be my right man person, and now would you welcome to be that way?
Who do you want to?
We we will schedule definitely before the chamber, we'll have a uh an open house or two probably here, you know, related to police and public safety, so those will be coming in the. In the spring, definitely before early voting starts, for sure.
Um all right, next, um our now we don't have any new business, any unfinished business to address. And then um next item will be the city memorials report. Any questions or comments for Andy to give out as your work? Andy, is there anything in that report that you um yeah? Want to highlight?
No, because there was three weeks and there was enough, um and you hopefully presumably read them every week anyway, but just um. Uh it looks like we're going to do these, the the city's sixtieth anniversary party in conjunction with Ice Cream Social, which I think would be June first. And uh looking at having a band downtown and we'll shut down the street and just kind of making it a bigger. A bigger event and then Doug, our rare volunteer, is very excited to be part of the planning of that, since it's going to be a downtown activity and downtown events, there will be more to come on that and we'd be great to. We'll try to get the Parks Board involved in addition to Neepan and the council and everything, so we'll try to make it a good event.
People as well, that should be a lot of fun, whether it's the things possible or not. Um and I also know that the I also want to the front of the senior side of that feed, which is coming out, it just comes in and out of that. Um a year or so, I'm going to be excited about the senior center, we do that, we have the two cities. So I know that the senior centers were also working on those associations that we organized. So um we may be reaching out to councilors and committee members who long choose, so. You know, there could be a preview for you on that, what's the. There, what's the. The twenty fifth of the north.
Yeah.
It's Saturday, I think, I believe the first meeting is uh four o'clock.
I saw that in David's story from society, she was doing work and she was going to go probably, but. She gave her own call while we were running the conference, she's going to need some help in this place. It's big deal.
And obviously, um North Plains um uh historical societies um participating or I know.
They're in the city, but they're still. Second, I'm not sure what we can do with, when you have any things. The city and make this all work in the eyes of the court. Those are just. Yeah.
And then one of my friends association was coordinating the Ice Cream Social and Pat is the coordinator, so.
We'll see with the historical society, most of those are. You know, young, so, uh but there's a few young, maybe they don't, I hope, and make a present, be aware.
Yeah.
In fact, we've been talking about the storyboards.
Yeah, we talked about getting some old photos and doing some storyboards. Yeah, we could blow those up and put them on some some big boards and show folks kind of that.
Yeah, okay, moving to.
Um Counselor, any Counselor reports?
Just one thing, it's maybe a safe issue, maybe not. Uh there's going on the city park, had fir trees all around, that's what it's doing. Many of them. Creepiest man. Actually, when we went to cut all the trees down around the city park, we had him involved. So anyway, there's one tree, big bird, that stands on the east of the library, I just wonder how good that tree is, you know, it's all that itself. You know, I didn't see anybody get hurt, but that was in conjunction with all the other trees that we put down and still there, it's a big one. And I don't know if it's a concern, you might look at it when you guys are looking at it, it's just easy to leave your effort right in the corner. Yeah, right across the street, I'm just curious, is that that tree, and then you like Tommy, but it's an old tree, must be at least a hundred years old, I don't know. I really like, you know.
That that tall one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had someone come out and take a look at it three years ago, I think, after a storm, yeah. The opinion then was it's fine, but actually I have a couple of other trees I need to get looked at, that's on the list, I got, we got an arborist. That was three years ago, no, yeah. Yeah, and actually, and it was around that time too, um they did some free trimming around it, um so I mean, P G E was actually cutting around the lines and we asked them, can you? See, if you see any other dead stuff around there, even if you have to go, can you do that too, and they did that, but yeah.
See, that was everything I would add to that too, is that if we do take trees like that down, have to find reason. If we can find a way to be focused on if possible. Um you know, then somehow take a farm or, you know, just talk to an artist, work with artists or something, that will be kind of need to be able to be focused on if it's.
Mm hmm.
Counselor Smith?
I've got a few things. I have to do a burn hill. I just want to go and work that today. For some reason, that doesn't look like what we include. You know. Especially what they include on North Avenue, some reason I thought. Like three lanes, so. Be able to go down, go down. And also bike paths and. By lost there.
Oh, do you mean west, kind of west of Main Street? Yeah, they they they've only done the section where their, where phase one homes would be, so that's just west of Main Street where that waterfall area is. All the way over to three oh nine, that's the frontage improvements they've done thus far. And then between three oh nine and uh Glencoe, that'll come in this next phase, actually, that'll probably start um early next summer. Yeah, early this summer, and then the rest to the west would be phases four and five go. So it'll all, it'll all be done.
You know, free, remember the conversation.
In in certain areas, they may have, if if a large power pole was in the way, which can't be moved unfortunately because of the the voltage there. Uh but no, they should all be eight foot wide paths and then obviously bike lanes on the street.
Do you want to be a cop?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can get you the plans. Sure.
When we talk about city, one is two, uh Sunset Ridge. Pick up levels, new backyard, and Steve and uh further. Walkway, one. Or another field. And I. Don't want the same thing to happen when you didn't sign the backyard. You know, we're there, closer than that, but I don't want that to happen before.
I know, I would think. Is that something that you saw right off the.
No, I just have a, so it's, we started a new session, we were. A lot of work. They were. I wanted to be saying, you know.
I think people have a super thought, it's kind of scared of us, and I know they feel that that was people in place, that it's kind of like a fence that was. Over here, but we're like, and you have a, I don't know, people play the way they're coming greater than.
Well, I I do know that the fence code, fences are weird. The fence code has changed since Sunset Ridge was approved to now, whereas it used to be when Sunset Ridge was approved. The fence would be six feet basically from the street. And now the code is six feet from the ground floor elevation of your home, so if your, your home was a bit, a few feet above the whole, uh the the street. Your fence is going to be starting at that height, so that's one change we made based on a lot of that Sunset Ridge issue. Some of those lots may be tiered a little bit, but there's also a little more topography in Brin Hill, natural topography there is in Sunset Ridge too. I concur.
Was that in the back of, I guess about pictures is kind of hard to, I've been in there, but it's kind of hard to. Uh something people pulled up, like the white, I didn't know if they were referring to the back part of your alley, but.
Yeah, 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 so everyone. Yeah, yeah, and the issue is, so a- a- any front yard has to have a three foot fence. And that's because if you're going to turn a corner, it's just safety, if you're going to turn a corner, you want to be able to see on it. The same thing goes for a backyard fence, if it's too fall, or too too tall, sorry, it may obstruct the vision. And when I, you know, it it does, in a couple of these areas, it does have a bit of a tunnel effect because these fences are built right up to the alley. And what he was saying earlier is, yeah, there are fences in the backyard in Sunset Ridge, but they're in line with the garage, if not. Two feet from the garage, what they were doing was all the way up to the alley, which was not a part of their pattern book. Um frankly, it shouldn't, it shouldn't have been approved, this was once ago, this was predated Steve. So. Yeah, I I mean, I get it, it it's a pain and if you're, if your only yard is the backyard and it's kind of small, but it makes against an alley, but six feet tall, you can see videos, we've actually looked some of these up. A chi- a child coming around a hedge row or something like that, you you can't see him and it's out of the blue.
And there's a. I know this is a.
Yeah.
I I get that. But it works now. Because you can see, I can see that.
Yeah, the 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 worst part is that. Leonard already built fences. And it was against our code, it was against their own pattern book and these people are upset and and I get it, because they feel like they're sold a couple of goods. So Steve comes in and notices this and goes, oh, that's, that's just not safe, that doesn't meet the vision requirements. Um he has to be the bad guy and we have to be the bad guy and. Even Leonard right now wants to change, you know, can you change city code or can you change his clear vision, like it's just, I mean, it's. One of these looks more aesthetically pleasing, I I I agree, but the other though, it's kind of a benefit of safety and that's, that's where we have to. That's where our calculation.
They come in and say city, 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 or it's like, well, when I obviously. Like my first place, well, it's like, you know, it's all right. Kind of, and then the stars sometimes and.
Yeah, and. We were trying to fix this where it's only affected eight people, so they did this in twelve homes, only eight of them were occupied, so it's really affecting eight people. And more than half of them showed up tonight, you know, it's probably six homes that just showed up. But we were trying to do that before we got to home one hundred, one hundred and fifty, we discovered it.
We can have some corners that come up through the binding section.
And that's exactly right, i- i- it, we may not even have to do it for twelve homes, we've, we've looked at it where um like one home, for instance, is is a bit more of a. It's closer to a dead end, you really wouldn't have any cars going by it, okay, that's one that could probably remain because you're not going to have any cars backing out or for traffic there. Um so we're, we're, we're kind of just weighing those things and, you know, trying to work with people. Yeah.
Um I I think Andy probably, um excuse me for the work session, right, great.
Right, yeah, Counselor Sheldon.
Thank you. So I was um testifying, so I can better um committee um and say, um and so they had. They had testimony and then they had public testimony beginning, there were about nine of us, nine or ten of us that spoke. Um there's a lot of conversations um around uh. Washington County and those were in North Plains and sites there, so. There's some really great, some big questions from the committee, um few committee members or, you know, you've got one down south and one on the eastern Oregon that are really, you know. Um grilling and buying for their communities, which they should, frankly, so. Um but there was, there was some good conversation and discussion my own, um it it's going to be a tough. Uh tough to do, you think that we're going to go back during North Plains and deciding where we go, east, west, north, south is hard, it's like. Can you imagine doing that on the city level or the bomb that magnitude, so I certainly had a lot of appreciation for the committee members and a lot of respect for what they're doing and trying to figure out, so. Um more to come, more to come, and you know, Bill and Andy are really keeping um their finger on the pulse on it as well and providing. Just providing good information and getting good feedback um from everyone involved, so more to come on that. Bill, do you have any thing to add?
Um I got comment from senior staff at D L C B, actually Deputy Director texted me. Um wanting the mayor to know that her testimony was fantastic and it was great to hear. Uh we have submitted letters from the mayor, you've been CC'd on them um as written testimony, but tonight was the mayor's first verbal testimony. Um and there was a lot of um. The extension of congratulations and very much um happy that you had verbally given testimony on things and what you had said was of great value, so kudos, yeah.
And Bill and I are planning based on um Linda. Um and in touch base, trying to touch base with all of you. Down here as well, so. We'll keep, first. Councillor.
We got one on, I don't know, seasonality, and professionalism from the state of. For you. Superiority, why, you know, this is not. And a lot of us, with the mayor, you know, you. These cohorts, they're on there, and so. I just, I just can see it. Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, well, that said, uh, we're going to go start meeting at eight one. Thank you, everyone.